All right, good morning, everyone. We'll call to order our meeting for Wednesday, February 15th.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Dickinson? Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Vice Chair Weymer?
Present.
If you stand ready for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning.
Morning. Brian Mann with Advent Health, the chaplain. Let us bow. Lord, I thank you so much for these servants of yours and the servants of this community. I ask that you would bless them, lead them, guide them, focus them, so that they may do your will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Claim vouchers today, our minutes from February 8th. Or, yeah, our consent agenda today, our minutes from February 8th. Claim vouchers are $980,547.77. Tax change orders are negative $56,422.96. And we have one emergency vehicle permit. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
No move. Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Weymer?
Yes. There we have some correspondents. First up is Karen Harris from the Conservation District.
Good morning.
Morning.
So we just wanted to come and give you guys an update. I know Ann was able to make it to our annual meeting in late January, but wanted to make sure that everybody had the same information as her. So definitely been another busy year for the Conservation District. We had a grant with our National Association and Land of Lakes. It was a three-year project with our conservation agronomists. And we were able to wrap up that grant. And the gal that had had that position has moved and is now covering the Hillsdale watershed area. So it was a successful project. It didn't quite go as we had planned, of course, because COVID started right in the middle of it, or at the beginning of it, I guess. And then some of our local sponsorship on it kind of fizzled out. But the National Association was very excited about the project. It served as a pilot that brought three additional conservation agronomists into the state of Kansas through the work that we were doing. So that was a big project that we completed last year. We provided cost share incentives on 1,300 acres of cover crops, which is not a lot, but it was just extra money. The guys were doing the cover crops. There's soil health benefits to it. And we partnered with ADM and FBN through our state association. And we were able to offer incentive payments on those acres. The state of Kansas went over 100,000 acres on the new cover crop program with ADM. So that's another new big project that's offered exclusively through the Conservation Districts across the state. We will continue to offer that program again in 2023 and look forward to hopefully getting more acres in here in Franklin County. Through our state-funded cost share program, which is exclusively offered through the Conservation District, the way it's structured through the Kansas Water Plan Fund, we are the only entity at the county level across the state in all counties to offer the funding. We received $17,000 for our non-point source, excuse me, non-point source pollution control program and $22,000 for our water resources cost share program. This is funding that went directly to Franklin County landowners and to Franklin County contractors for implementation of best management practices, erosion and sediment control, water quality projects, pasture range management, all of those natural resource-related projects that we do. We also received an additional $21,000 through the Water Resources Program that the state did a software update and they canceled the previous year contracts, but then re-awarded the money to us. So we had a little bit of extra that was carryover from the year before. So with those three allocations, it was about $90,000 worth of on-the-ground work that was done through our office, through the state funding. And then through our partnership with USDA, of course, we're co-located there in the office with them and provide some administrative assistance and help work on all of the farm bill programs. The equip program, there were $38,000 worth of payments. Conservation stewardship had just short of $15,000 worth of payments. And the grassland conservation initiative had just short of $73,000 worth of payments. And then, of course, the Farm Service Agency's big program is the Conservation Reserve Program. We've got 2,922 acres under contract in CRP here in Franklin County with $206,000 in annual payments. So if you take all of those figures and add them up for the $45,000 that you guys award the Conservation District for our operating budget, we were able to assist with bringing into the county $406,510 in program payments. Of course, Farm Service Agency has more through some of their ARC and PLC programs as well. But it was a busy year. Cost share continued on our soil test program, 150 soil tests that we paid for through the extension office. And then we had approximately 182 volunteer hours at just short of $5,000 value through our earth team volunteer program. We had several friends of conservation that donated almost $2,500 to help with some of our programming and our annual meeting, the meeting that we had there in January. Those sponsors included D&amp;D Tire, Franklin County Farm Bureau Association, Phi Farm Seed Company, Gopert State Service Bank, Kansas State Bank, Keana Quip, Ken Taylor, Lang Dirt Service, Oakstar Bank, Ottawa Co-op, Patriots Bank, QSI, Rockers Earthworks, Shuck Implement, and 777 Seed and Chemical. So certainly appreciate the support of the commissioners on our budget and then those sponsors that helped with our annual meeting and some of our programming. We are working with the experiment station on a multi-year cover crop study for weed suppression and soil health. This was a project that started through the Kansas Department of Ag that our agronomist had kind of taken the lead on. And Darren and I continue to implement that project. This will be the last year for it. And he's doing some research on the weed suppression and so forth through that project for us. We continue to own and operate our little six-foot Great Plains and Oatil drill. We actually just purchased a new one last year with revenue received off of rent from the previous drill. It covered 635 acres. But the more impressive figure for that is that we sold $25,000 worth of custom blended grass seed through our office last year, being one staff. And all of these other programs, it was a pretty busy year. And I was impressed that we sold that much seed. So the other big news is our Conservation District mission. Kent Scott retired in December after 37 years. I say "our," but he was actually a USDA employee, co-located there in the office with us. But he did all of the technical assistance on our state-funded cost share, did a lot of the field work. I'm sure most farmers in the county knew him, knew his name, knew his face, and knew the expertise that he had. So right now, we are without that position. And USDA has advertised, and we hope to be replacing him. One of the big projects that he started working before he left was with Jeff Welton and introducing Jeff to the Corps of Engineers. I think there was a project that kind of needed some assistance and blue line tributary work. And the way I understood it was maybe Jeff hadn't been familiar with working with the Corps. And so that's a new project? I think we're kind of in the works on it. I don't know if you were in on that one with him. And so that was, it's not finished yet. So I guess we'll probably have more to report on that. But Jeff and I have been in communication on that project and working with the landowner and trying to get everything straightened out. So we continue to utilize Facebook and our website. And I think your website's great. I listened to last week's meeting. Thank you for giving me the heads up that you guys were going to have a super busy agenda. But a lot of people just aren't familiar with using the website. And so, but it, once you get on there, you know where to find the stuff. And a lot, a lot of people say they don't know what's going on in the county. And that's unfortunate for them, that they're disconnected, because I know the information's out there. I know we advertise. And so when people are like, "Oh, I didn't even know we had a Conservation District." So I get that you guys sitting there hearing those same comments, it's so frustrating. But anyway, I don't think that's, that there was anything else that I had. Just wanted to give you some updates. One other thing I just found out yesterday afternoon. We are going to partner with USD 287 out at West Franklin. On March 9th, they are bringing in a speaker to shatter the stigma of mental health and the Kansas ag stress. Kansas is one of the highest percentages of suicide is related directly to farmers and the ag community. The percentages of suicide are higher amongst the ag community than your general population. And so we are partnering and provided some funding for that project that 287 is doing out there the evening of March 9th as a community event. They're also going to have this same gentleman, he was a basketball coach and went through some issues. He'll be there during the day with the students and then available in the evening to the public. And then we are also working with FCDC on the Ag Growth Summit, March 2nd, I think. Okay. So anyway, busy, busy. Thank you, guys. I'll be back in here probably next month or so with our funding allocation request. And just business as usual, but lots going on. So if you have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
All right, Dallas, break your power.
Good morning, commissioners. We thank you for the opportunity to be able to see you. And I want to go over a couple of things here with you this morning. First, we're going to go over a few things in the way we've invested in our community and our hospital, some of the ways that our dollars have been able to positively impact the healthcare here. And then secondarily, go over our 2022 sales tax dollars utilization and 2023's approved budget per RMH and the definitive agreement. So thanks again for the time. So one of the areas that we're proud of and we like to serve in is obviously in delivering babies. And we have been, there's many people you run into that have said, "Hey, I delivered here and my daughter delivered here, and now I've got a grandbaby here." So purchased a brand-new baby panda, panda baby warmer. Several things for our emergency department, which is an important space. About 75% of patients that choose emergency department care in our region come through our emergency department, and we're happy to do so. So one of those things, it's really important to be able to do high-level ICU care. And we've got a new chest compression system that allows us to do that. As we care for a number of kids, we wanted to create a space where they felt really comfortable in getting that care, because it's scary to come through an emergency department. And that's something we wanted to address. And then as you come into a room, as you get your care, many things come through our electronic medical record. And so we scan those medications before delivery to ensure that it matches the order. We brought those into the rooms to make sure, from a safety and compliance perspective, that we're giving you the right medication every time. In our imaging area, another important area that's used a lot. The Trophon device ensures that we sterilize ultrasound probes very effectively in between uses. MRI is an important area that many people get, and this MRI wand helps us there. And mammography is a space that has been challenged from a staffing perspective and maybe documented some in the community. That's a, something we have been able to secure and invest in. We worked kind of our staffing model and invested in different ways to do our very best to recruit people here in a very competitive environment. In surgery, exciting program, digestive health program that allows our general surgeons to repair issues around gastric reflux. So it's called a TIF procedure, and there's equipment that goes with that. But this is something that's not done in very many locations. And Dr. McCullough does that in conjunction with Dr. Morris here. And we're really excited to have that here for our community. Some of the patients I've run across already have said, "This has been life-changing for me." And so we're excited to be able to bring that into this community. Also, some other good equipment from gastroscopes and laparoscopic camera that helps general surgery ensure high-quality care. In our ICU, in our floor, med-surg area, we invested in six more hospital beds. We know if you're laying in a bed and it's not yours, that you want it to be as comfortable as possible. And they get wear and tear. And so we've got six new hospital beds with mattresses. We have new recliners in those rooms that allow us to, infection controls of even greater focus at this point. And so creating surfaces that we can wipe everything down and ensure cleanliness for each patient. And then a few other areas. One area we invested in is security staffing. It's well documented in healthcare that workplace violence has continued to increase. Healthcare is not the only place, but unfortunately, sometimes people get through the doors of the hospital and they believe that it, all bets are off. And so we've invested in security staffing to ensure that our workforce is protected, that any patients that come through that door are in a secure space. And so that was an important one for our teams and for our patients that come through the door. We've got several refreshed projects in the hospital that were showing some wear and tear and are valuable from that perspective. Lastly, we've got Phase 1. We talked about the Health Park when I was last here. Phase 1 is complete at Ninth and Main. You see the exterior of that building's coming together and looks very different. The right side of that building is complete. And all the physicians in Suites 3 and 4 have been relocated as of December 28th. They're off and running there. You hear the noise probably in the building, and I'm sorry about that in the current phase 2, but we're excited to get rehab relocated here. And then we'll be back over to the Health Park to complete that project. That's a little over $5 million invested in county-owned facilities and assets that don't sit under the Advent Health ownership. And we're excited about that, because we're really oriented to wanting to care for as many people here, right here in the county. And so trying to create elbow room and space to make that happen is an important piece for us. And so want to continue to invest that way and ensure we're doing that. Now I'll let Harmatt talk a little bit about sales tax, and then we'll open up to questions.
Good morning. So I want to give you an update on the sales tax utilization dollars for 2022. The first column that you see is the budget that was approved by the RMH board of the approved dollars. We had $1 million for charity care, and then we had the remainder in capital. You can see the different buckets in there for routine capital, for our rehab relocation project, and for our physician clinic relocation project. Those items were all matching as far as the actual. And then the additional dollars that we received, we put into operations. One of the things that has been critical for us this year is staffing. And so we wanted to invest some more dollars in retaining and recruiting our staff. We had a RN staff retention initiative. And so that was 100, almost $140,000 went there. And then in addition to that is critical staffing. So these are bonuses that we pay for hard-to-fill shifts to get people to cover when we have someone who calls out, or we're not available to cover when census is higher. So those were the additional items. I want to touch a little bit more on our routine capital. You can see five items that were funded with the sales tax. These are all items that Dallas shared with you. That's a total of $155,000. Our total routine capital spent for the year was over $300,000. So this was just under half funding. And then for our charity care, our total charity was $1.4 million for the year. So sales tax dollars funded about 70% of our charity care. As far as the rehab and physician clinic relocation, that's about $1.2 million. Again, as Dallas mentioned, reinvested into county-owned assets. The physician clinic project alone, that's $4.4 million. So in 2022, $550 was funded through sales tax dollars. 2023. So for 2023, the budget that was approved by the board is $700,000 for charity care. We did decrease that from previous years and really wanted to put a little bit more into operations, given the challenges that we have around the staffing front. So we have 700 for charity. Routine capital is fairly similar. We've already gone well on our way spending that routine capital. We just recently approved a project to upgrade our central sterile equipment. So this is equipment that we use to decontaminate and sterilize all of our surgical equipment. Physician relocation project, so this is the second half of the project. So in total, it'll be about 1.3 funding for this project. And then a nurse call system. So if you've been in the hospital, you know when you're in a bed and you need a nurse or an aide to come, you push a button and they come to you. That's what the system is. Our system is antiquated, and the call function is no longer working. So we are investing in a new system. This is just a fraction. The system is close to $600,000. So we're looking for just partial funding from sales tax utilization. On the operations side, as I mentioned, critical staffing. This is going to go into multiple buckets. This is bonuses we pay for hard-to-fill, critical staffing shortages. And then in addition to that, this is recruitment. So sign-on bonuses that we're paying to retain full-time staff here. And then the last way we would utilize this is for agency staffing. The other three buckets are pretty self-explanatory. Repairs, it is an aging facility, so we are seeing a lot more large repairs come through. So this is just to maintain the facility. And then lastly, the employee appreciation events. Again, we're in a time where our staff, they're our number-one asset. They always have been, but it's all the more critical now. So we're really reinvesting in them and making them feel appreciated. Any questions?
And one of you just talked through, because I get a lot of questions about the commissioners' involvement and how the sales tax is utilized. And we all know that the commissioners aren't involved. And in fact, statutorily, they can't be involved. But could you just explain how these numbers were arrived at, who the discussion was with, and how that process works?
Sure. So we have, going into this, obviously, I wasn't here in setting up the arrangement, but there's a definitive agreement that's in place between the RMH board and the hospital. And so we have an oversight from an RMH board perspective that is specifically designated around a couple of things. One thing is we want to ensure that the quality, it was important from a county perspective, the quality, that we continue to provide high-quality care here. And in fact, that's really important to us, and we want to invest in that and continue to grow that. The second piece was because there's sales tax that is tied to the hospital, that there's oversight related, oversight and approval that comes through that board. So that's a seven-member team. It's all local members of the community that participate in that. We've had a number of discussions. Obviously, there's been plenty of hospital discussion over the last several months. And we've had a number of discussions around sales tax. That is a board that's open to the community. And we've had some community comments relative to that and have taken those into consideration. I would say that the individuals that are part of that, several of those were a part of the team that were a part of the board before Advent Health came and remain a part of that. And so they've seen through that transition, they've seen years of hospital care and challenges from a community perspective. And so they come from a really strong and educated position relative to healthcare. We, so there's a great deal of discussion. There's not always perfect agreement. But as a board, when we presented this, as they, we walked through this and talked about the different buckets, and there's three buckets, charity care, operations, and capital that could be spent in, the group felt like this was a good blend of those particular, three particular areas that it could be utilized in.
So, and I follow that, and I just want to make sure, because I want to maybe explain it to them and the public and make sure that you two are in agreement. Prior to affiliation, there was what we call the ransom board. You appointed the members. Statutorily, we have to do that. People considered it a county-owned hospital, but the commissioners never ran the hospital. You appointed a board to do that for you. Post-affiliation, that board still exists. While things have changed a little bit, that board is still tasked with allocating the sales tax dollars. As Dallas said, many of the members that were here pre-affiliation are still here post-affiliation. The two of you sat down with that board, had multiple discussions about how these dollars are allocated, and their input was considered in putting this together. Okay?
Absolutely.
Just want to make sure. I think the four of you understand that. But given the questions I get, I want to make sure anybody listening kind of understands that process. So.
The questions I want to get probably is, is the allocations for operations that you gave. When it was in the, I saw the 2022 budget, and then it now says in the 2022 actual, the operations were bonuses and staffing. I thought that was separate for tax, or the sales tax dollars weren't going to be used for operational purposes. Has that changed?
That they were not to be, or?
Yeah, not to be used for operational purposes.
So there was, there's a lengthy agreement that's kind of set out between the two entities relative to this. Of the three things, it was charity care, capital, and operations as the three particular areas. Again, I would say there's a good deal of discussion amongst the group of seven, right, as to where the ideal location for that to rest is in a year in which we have, an era in which we've had so much challenge around staffing, which isn't specific to Ottawa. Sometimes it can feel like that, but the healthcare industry's been turned upside down over the last three years. And so from that perspective, on the staffing and retention side of things, the group felt like they were comfortable with that being used there.
Was the ransom board in agreement with that?
They were.
They're the one that came up with that budget based on input from the community, right?
Yes, yes.
All the questions are actually coming in?
Any other questions?
Probably, yes, that I would ask, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your engagement in the community. And we are very grateful for the sales tax dollars. I would tell you that that is critical to being able to run a hospital in this market in this time. And so we're thankful and grateful for that. Thank you.
Thanks. Do you have any public comment?
Norman Woogie, 3790 Bunny Road. We, the people, want to thank you for representing us by voting down the windmill issue. The people in your position did their job. Congratulations on that. But the smoke remains. It gives us a chance to study what happened and collect information on what is happening and what might happen. First, check out the Turkey in Syria earthquake to see that they have windmills. Lots of windmills. Lots and lots of windmills. Mother earth is fragile, and remember, God is in control. I keep a close contact with my sister in Williamsburg, Virginia. I have nieces and nephews live nearby. I asked my nephew Roy about the windmill possibilities back east. As I heard, much of the electricity generated throughout Kansas is shipped back east. Roy was quick to point out, there is no place in Williamsburg for the windmills. Roy said, "We are proud of our heritage, and we are going to fight to preserve it." I spent considerable time at weddings and other occasions. These people are just like us, hardworking, God-loving, common people. I asked Roy, "Are there plans for windmills in Virginia?" He was quick to defend Virginia by saying it would be sacrilegious to alter their beloved Williamsburg. But there are two windmills out in the ocean being constructed, and that the plan is to queue more than 200 windmills out in the ocean. and that the plans incude more than 200 windmills out in the ocean. This is good, this is bad. The good is the generators catch on fire. The fire would be easily contained. Bad is the windmills notoriously leak oil. Surely they can control it. It is noble that so many people stood up to protect their well life here in Kansas. I personally am proud that the natural migration of our birds is protected and they are able to do their natural things. We now need to work on the smoke that remains at the fire where most stay put out. I visited with my youngest son about the windmills in Johnson County. Johnson County's growing. He said that the neighbors thought the solar panels were a better fit, period. I kind of give it a G rating on their comments. They weren't happy at all about the windmills. The solar conservation, as you heard earlier, protect the windmills. Windmills? No windmills, thank you. It seems like a set of people are building another pipe dream here in Franklin County. The housing development. Other county leaders not to get involved with the project. If you just let nature take its course, there's probably plenty of land that can be bought from individuals at a price. That's the way America works. Land east on K 68, land down 050, land toward Princeton and north on 59. Ottawa shows it hasn't grown very much in the last 50 years. Is my time up?
You're down to less than a minute?
I'll save it for next week.
Okay. Can't wait. All right, we grabbed the consent agenda earlier, that's it, right? All right. And we're down to items of business. The first is, first of which is to seek approval to submit an HIM grant for Ottawa Destination Development, something we talked about a little bit previously. Paul, I believe you're up on this one?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm back. This is to follow up with you based on the conversation we had last week on taking advantage of the federal funds for moderate income housing for workforce. As you know, we don't have enough people to fill the jobs we have and part of the solution to that is more housing in our community. This project, and you've received an update, but just want to walk through a little bit. The project's changed a little bit in the sense, last week I mentioned it'd be 72 to 76 units. When they did some more math and looked through some more incentives and such, they've reduced that to 40 for this particular application. Still, the plan would be to eventually get to 72, but from the grant perspective and for today's conversation, it's two structures, 20 units in each, a total of 40 units at this point. The grant request is the maximum under the MIH guidelines, 3.5 million. They're going to seek tax credits, 1.2 million. And then they may or may not, depending on how this goes down the road, they may or may not seek some TIF support from the city. But basically, the investors are going to have over $2 million of their personal assets invested in this project, so pretty significant. And a big chunk of that's the purchase of the land. So what we're seeking from you today is, this would be a grant request on behalf of Franklin County for this property that is in the city limits. FCDC would be the, basically, the conduit for the county. So FCDC is the agency within the county, quite frankly, that would be managing this. I would do this under the guidance of the county administrator and the county clerk, obviously very closely as we have, as we've worked through this. But the point person on it would be FCDC. There's no local tax dollar cost on this project. FCDC included in the grant, if it's awarded, FCDC will get $10 million for administering this grant and working on that. So it was kind of the developers to consider the effort and the time that FCDC is putting into this and include that in the grant. But basically, the deadline is on Friday. This is, just to give you a sense, this is it. It's a lot of, lot of information on the whole grant, but predominantly, again, this is a program from the state, which is federal funds, so it's federal tax dollars that are going to be spent somewhere in the United States. And so if we're not out trying to get it, somebody else will get the money, but all of us as taxpayers will pay for it. So I think it's important for us as a county and a community to get as much of that money from the federal government as we can, since we're going to be paying taxes. Our kids will be paying for it and our grandkids. So hopefully, our kids and grandkids will benefit from those dollars if we can get those dollars in our county. There is another application that also in our county from Wellsville for another rental project. Rental is our number one need for housing right now. It was two years ago. It's probably even more so now with interest rates going up. It's harder for people to purchase homes. And so the rental market's even more critical. And these are, these subsidies through this federal program allow these rents to be lower so it can accommodate workforce housing based on our income levels in our county. So appreciate the developers, appreciate their investment. Mickey's here, if you have any particular questions you want to ask. He's been tremendous to work with and sincerely takes a strong position on protecting and working with the county and have been real impressed with his ethics. And appreciate the opportunity to work with Mickey. So happy to answer any questions you have.
Paul, why don't you talk them through, or I can, where we're at regarding issuing an RFP for bids, why we're not going to do that? I want to make sure that the commissioners understand that.
No, thank you, Derek. Great point. On these programs initially, this one went through the city because it was in the city limits. The city issued an RFP. This was back in December, I think we've been working on it, Mickey. And so that's part of the process is the public agency issues an RFP and then it, they take applications and sort through them. I'm obviously on that committee with the city. There were three applicants that came in. In those discussions, the city was leaning toward one of the other applicants. And so the discussion had as well, if the program allows, which we found out it did, that we could run this application through the county, even though it's in the city limits, would the city have any objection? They were very supportive of that approach. And it turned out later that city didn't even continue with the one they were looking at. So the city's not even submitting an app at this point on this round. But with the timeline, this grant's due Friday. And so under the guidance and the guidelines of the grant, when we brought it over to the county, we're not required to do an RFP at the county level. There's a sole source avenue for that, which is basically what's included in this grant request, is I walked through the process, that we started this application through an RFP with the city. The city elected, asked the county to run with it. That's why we're here today. And that timeline did not allow for another 30 day RFP. And so what we, what we're doing as a sole source, as we vetted this developer, Mickey introduced me to one of the main investors. I had dinner with him and had a great conversation. So I was able to spend some time kind of seeing who we're dealing with on the investment side. Very, very strong and very, very credible. And I've talked to several other people that he's very engaged at the state level. And so I got a lot of strong recommendations on the validity and the character of our partners in this case. And as I said, I've developed a lot of respect for Mr. Davis. So through that process, then we've come to you a couple of weeks ago and then we've continued to work through this with the state agencies that are running this grant program. So that's why there's not a county RFP on this. It was basically through the city. Timelines did not allow for us to do another 30 day RFP and you do have the opportunity to do a sole source identification of a developer. And that's kind of what we walked through if that, if you want to add anything to that, Derek. Feel free.
We ran that through the state to get there okay. And they're fine with that process.
So not unlike sometimes we buy things on state pricing, knowing that the state already went through the process of bidding it out, getting the competitive process. So it's kind of the same idea, but.
The only feedback we got from the state that I want to make sure you're aware of is that we just have to follow our own internal sole source policies. And frankly, we don't have a policy that speaks to this because we're not, we're not buying anything. I mean, the county's not outlaying any capital for this. We're literally just the applicant. And so practically, I don't see any issues. I mean, we've got what we feel like is the appropriate go ahead from the state. It makes logical sense what we're doing. Paul's put together a good narrative for the state should there be any questions. So I don't have any issues, just want to make sure the four of you understand the process.
Just curious, it looks like these are one and two bedroom units?
One and two.
What, how do you decide what the need is as far as one, two, and three? We hear a lot about needing three or for families. Just curious, not a criticism.
We, we reviewed your study. I guess it. And we're going to try to get up to 78. So the mix now is going to be one and two. We're also looking at doing some duplexes so that could cover
Gotcha.
your larger families. We've been happy with Paul, Derek, and Melanie over at the city. So we're going to look to do some more projects, whether we receive this grant or not because the grant competed. So because of the good cooperation, we're going to look to do some other projects. Daycare, some other stuff.
And part of this, don't you have to do some infrastructure that'll be needed back to the city?
The street.
The street and all that.
Coming off of 68.
A lot of these tax dollars will go right back to the city anyway. They're not, you know.
There'll be going, the street coming off 68 will be public. So we'll build it and then feed it.
Feed it back, so yeah. All right.
This project allow the visitor center to get on the sewer system?
Your ways away.
And be up to the city.
There's no sewer on that side of the road, is there?
On the side of where we're building. Yeah, there's sewer.
There's a, yeah. On the west edge of that property. Or depending on what city's.
There's, there's a question on the utilities, whether it's going to be evergreen or to be part of the city.
Any other questions? Anyone care to make a motion to approve the submitted all the application for the base grant? Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, we should hear something on this at the end of March 1st of April.
Great.
I'm hoping that's approved.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
I share Waymore.
Yes.
That was good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, second item of business is to consider approval of Tyler Public Safety Software Maintenance Renewal.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is one of the other annual invoices that I try and get to you early in the year. Little delayed on this one because I really had a lot of conversations and issues over a 6% increase over the normal 5% that we've recognized for several years now. Not sure, yeah, if for $400, $450 really as much time as I spent into it, but I had a problem with the principle of increasing that without prior notice. But we did get confirmation that it was a 6% increase across the board this year. This is strictly related to the public safety suite that we've been running since 2015. It has nothing to do with the new software projects that we're currently doing. Outside of an additional 1%, it is in line with what we've done for the last several years. This is funded partially out of the IT software support line. Anything that is related specifically to dispatch is funded out of the emergency communication funds.
Well, appreciate you working on them. Any questions? Anyone care to make a motion to approve the payment of the invoice to Tyler Public Safety?
Make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
I share Waymore.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Staff reports.
Thanks, Cole. Just a couple of quick things. We, and this actually came through, I believe at least a couple of you got this, but we got a request from Baldwin City. They are applying for a grant to fund a multi use trail that would connect Baldwin and Ottawa. And it's along the railway there. And they have just asked for the county's support, asked that we would write them a letter of support. I absolutely have no issue at all doing that. Want to make sure that, you know, you all are on board before I speak on behalf of the county. So any, any questions or concerns about that?
They wouldn't be asking for any more easily, would they, on them than they already have?
I don't know that.
I mean, that'd be the only question I would have.
At this point.
I wouldn't want to.
Just looking at what they sent, at this point, it's a concept, not really, but it didn't look like they were. They didn't, it's not, it's not a build quality drawing, it's not that detailed, but.
That's, that's my only question would be, you know, as long as they're staying within their reason what they have now.
They did show money set aside for a bridge to get over the railroad, the active line and things like that. I know it's something we discussed years ago, that they had their issues with the railroad staff, the issues up there, and it kind of died, but we were for it then and it's still.
I, I think we're going to see more and more federal dollars set aside for these types of projects. And certainly, there is sentiment among the community that, you know, we have these bike trails, we want to continue to try and take advantage of that. This, this would fall right in line with all of that. So any issue at all, notwithstanding Don's comments about us writing this letter of support? Okay. Well, I will, I will go ahead and do that on behalf of the county commissioners in Franklin County. Only other thing, this afternoon, or actually strike that this morning, we have interviews for our planning director position. Got two good applicants. We're going to sit down and talk with them. Anticipate making a decision fairly quickly on that. So that's really all I have this morning. Thank you.
Anything else, Paul?
Just want to reinforce, this week is grant week. All of these MIH grants and some other grants are due this week. So we've been spending a lot of time on those. Also, it's the deadline for housing investor tax credits, which people don't have to be doing MIH program. They can, if they're building, just go for the tax credits. And so we've been busy supporting a lot of those throughout the city and the county as well. And so doing everything we can to get those federal dollars and get housing investments going. That's a big concern, as I've mentioned, is workforce is already short right now. And when you start looking at Panasonic and others, it's going to be pretty severe. So we really have to get ahead of this housing issue. And then tomorrow, we're going to have, this is through E-Community in partnership with Coffey County, Anderson County, and Lent County. We'll have our Destination Conference where we have a speaker coming in from Colorado that's going to talk to retail businesses. we have a speaker coming in from Colorado that's gonna talk to retail businesses mostly about how to make their business a destination location, and I believe Commissioner Stottemeyer and his wife are gonna plan to attend that, but I think that should be a good event. I, I got the list from my equal over there at Jubilee Turnip Seed this morning, we have a really good turnout, so we're, we're a thousand dollar sponsor of that to bring this speaker here, so we partnered and excited about turnout. I'm happy to answer any questions on anything that I'm involved in, if you have any. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Pat, anything?
So we have a couple of upcoming projects that are rather large for what we typically see. We've got Walmart, who's gonna do a quarter million square foot renovation of their D C Center, and then Cans Equip is about to add about thirty-six thousand square feet to their showroom and the Mechanics Bay, they're gonna, which entails a rather large expansion footprint of what they've got now, so. Working with both general contractors, we were able to kinda set a record for a permit fee on the Walmart one, so that was kinda cool. But overall, that's two of our larger projects, everything else is pretty run-of-the-mill, so.
Evergy coming in front of them next week, right?
We do have a few S U Ps that will be coming up, one regarding a tower right outside of Ottawa, and then we have the substation that will, you guys will probably be seeing coming through the Planning Commission. I think it is this month, so next week, I believe we, we're gonna deal with it. And it's a little contentious, but.
Our outside Ottawa cell tower?
That's gonna be up in April, we'll, we'll be doing.
Cell tower?
It is a cell tower, yeah, not anything like the last one we talked about. It is just a standard cellular self-supporting tower. But it is in a location that is relatively close to town, so we just need to take a, a nice, long look at it, but, okay.
Thanks Pat.
Protest petition filed on the Evergy Substation, we will bring that in front of you next week. Staff will put a fair bit of time into that over the next week. That could have came last week, but given the fact that a protest was filed, which will then require a four out of five vote, wanted to wait until we had five commissioners here, so. Know that's on its way.
Kyle? All right, David?
So last week I mentioned that I was getting ready to submit the high-risk rural roads funding application to KDOT. That was submitted last week. The same day that I submitted it, the cost share program for the spring of twenty-three came out, and so busy working on that application as well, to hopefully be able to fund the improvements to Old Fifty here in the next year to two years. Also, next week I will be bringing a request from a landowner to upgrade a portion of Texas Road north of Butler Terrace down south. It's about three quarters of a mile, but there's a family that would like to build a house on their very large piece of property, but there's only really one area that is suitable for a building. To make that happen, to comply with county regulations, they would have to upgrade that road to full maintenance. So I'll be bringing that information to you to consider. And then we also got word on our transfer station backhoe that is actually in Wamigo now at the dealer. We're waiting on the, on the bucket to be installed, and so once that happens, we ought to be able to acquire that, so I'm expecting here sometime in the next few weeks for that to happen. And then finally, we've got another winter storm coming in, and so we're out today pre-treating our, our hills, our curves and intersections, and then we'll have staff out tonight kinda monitoring the situation, and we'll call folks out if and when conditions warrant, so that's all I have.
Carrie Harris from the Conservation District kinda mentioned it, but the community partner applications are out to those entities, and it's live on our website, so our community partners are gonna be putting their applications together. I have that scheduled to be on your study session on the twentieth of March is the date that I have for them to come in and present to you guys. So they're due back by the thirteenth, so they had right out a month to get them done.
Commissioners, Don?
Yeah, like I told you, last week I attended Ranville meeting, thought I wanted to get my little more facts and figures together on it before I reported. They have added two more council members down there, and they're completely full at this point, with all their councils filled. They're talking about their balance in their park fund, talked about the balance in their COVID fund, they talked about their upgrading their chlorine system for their water system there, and ordering some new meters. Talking about redoing their main wellhouse and re, re, put a new roof on it and insulating it. They approved, ordered us to apply their court costs for Coast Court, approved and ordered the enforcement notices, and they swore in the court's clerk for their new Coast Court there in Ranville. They're archiving a bunch of records on modular homes and campers and stuff inside the city limits. They've asked Ottawa Herald to go back and find, if they could, where they've been filed public notices in years past, they can't find them, hopefully they'll find them. They're redoing their contract with the fire department down there, it hasn't been redone in three years. Mocandile down there, and courts has got the big grant in that area to redo the whole system. They're gonna locate their station area there in Ranville by where the high school used to be, that long property owns the Dodson, and they're gonna rent that property for him through the duration of, of the project, I guess. And then I'll go on to the next step, how that type, why I mention that. I know I met with, or talked with Mr. Dodson a couple of years ago. The city down there is trying to refurbish their park, it just kinda went in disarray over the last few years, and, and never heard anything from him for a year or two. But anyhow, the rent that he is gonna collect from the company doing the internet system, he's gonna donate that to the park, and the city, they did a fundraiser last summer through Walmart, where Walmart donated a lot of stuff that offfall and stuff they didn't want anymore, didn't need new stuff, and they had a private in-house auction for that old summer loan and raised fifteen thousand dollars from that, and that's gonna go towards, well anyhow, the city was planning on putting a new fence around, and that was gonna be, I think about sixteen thousand dollars. Well now with, it was only gonna be three foot high, now with Dodson coming in, they're gonna raise it to six foot high and put it all the way around the park, and Dodson is also gonna provide the equipment and the people to go down and redo the groundwork of the field too, before it's done, so. Sound like a great deal that, you know, between the, the community and fundraisers and Walmart, I thank them too for the deal. And I think the only thing they're waiting on is how we go on the ARPA funds. I know they applied for some funds on that, so that's the only thing they're left down to on that, but it sounds like they're making some improvements to their, in their park, you know, as a whole. And I went, oh, I went to Wellsville meeting, many things on the topic there, it was almost the same thing Paul talked about today, the Wellsville doing up there also for housing, doing the same thing, and everything. Talked about sewer plant repair, the mobile housing, everything they need to qualify. And they're also, I think in the next week or so, taking their new delivery on their new fire pit, what they've been ordering a year and a half to do, just now, yeah, they're coming from Kentucky, and so it's, it's been a slow boat to China to get in Kentucky to here, like a month, almost changing places and trains. But anyhow, they will have the factors on hand in the next week or two. That's all.
Yes, so last Friday went to a ribbon cutting for Ottawa Hidden Traders, one twenty-nine South Main, it's a kind of a mini mall, they got about eight or twelve, eight to twelve stalls in there of different items. The main one I liked was Maggie's, Maggie's popcorn and confectionery, or whatever she calls it, but that's where she's moving, and they've got some neat things in there for that coffee, and that's all I have.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Your second?
Second.
All favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, adjourn.